Flourish, regenerate, evolve, as well in inherent rights to restoration, recovery, and preservation. You are in violation of the treaty rights. When you cut these trees down, it's an absolute atrocity to the indigenous people through the world. You are supposed to be the stewards and the guardian of the property itself. That is part of the treaty. You are in violation of the treaty. So you do not respect the indigenous people of Oregon. I will stand alongside of them and I will ask every one of them, did any of you authorize to cut these trees down? And I know what their answer will be. We are one with nature. We love these trees, Lightning. And thank you so much for trying to defend them against these people who will commit the atrocity of cutting these trees down and ending their lives. My statement to you, when you do that, I will begin to remove the name Multnomah off the county name. We will remove that name and I will have full support of all the indigenous people, not just Oregon, but throughout the United States. Get ready. I'm waiting for that day you cut those trees down. I have the Historical Society on hold. We're doing videos now. We're going to do videos after the fact. We're going to research this in depth, who made those decisions? And who's trying to get elected to be the next chair? If you approve this, good luck. Good luck. You're not going to be sitting where Chair Kofori is. She is a lame duck. She's on her way out and she could care less about these trees. Is that not true, Chair Kofori?
Your time is up, sir. Thanks so much.
Thank you so much. Welcome back. I've missed you.
Well, vice versa.
And that is sincere, unlike Multnomah County toward the indigenous people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sincere good morning to you. For the record, I may be injured and pissed off, but my name is Charles Bridge Crane Simka Johnson. And I represent Individuals for Justice, the Joe Walsh Commemorative Local Branch. As we're in the middle of this heat emergency, I've been sort of skating around the edges of it. So of course, there's other people in the county staff that could give you a much more comprehensive update. But what I do know is that on the first night of the heat emergency, while the libraries were still open, people had to be sent from the Portland Building to other locations because the need is there. I don't know which locations are full, but I was very surprised to learn that while the library is open until 8:00 or 9:00, sheltering people from the heat, enough people had already gone through downtown to the Portland Building and been told, you're not going to sleep here. You're going to go out to the East County Community Center, or you're going to go to Charles Jordan. So hopefully, we're doing much better than we did a year ago. And perhaps we'll get through this crisis with zero fatalities. It's not all on you. We know that most of those deaths happened under the purview of Home Forward. You all have no official authority over Home Forward, so it wasn't your job to get a report where Home Forward explains how four or six public housing residents die from heat. We can only hope that the city and Home Forward's independent board have done enough to protect their tenants. On a more positive note, beans and rice were delicious at Congressional Beth Israel, where people were gathered to remember the life and contributions of Jenny Nelson, who was co-founder of Sisters of the Road. She very much believed in mutuality and understanding the actual lived experience of people on the ground and having that influence our solutions. Yet somehow, right across from the Gladys McCoy Building, there's a vacant lot where dozens of people used to sleep. It's not safe for them to sleep there, but it's safe for county employees and transition project employees to go in and out of work. So I hope that the Joint Office of Home Services and, less directly yourselves, will be able to come up with a safety plan that can improve safety in that area so that land, that full block of vacant land, which for a few years housed dozens of people, can still contribute. I mean, when we talk about location near services, that's the hotspot. So good luck to you as we deal with this poverty issue that the federal government should help us more with.
That is all for our public testimony. R1, resolution approving a lease of the property located at 4550-4600 Southwest McAdam Avenue Suite, to be decided, Portland, Oregon 97239, for the Multnomah County Library Storage and Sorting Facility with Temporary Library Support Services.
Commissioner Vega-Petersen moves. Commissioner Myron seconds. Approval of R1. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Katie Scheifli, and I use she/her pronouns, and I'm the Director of Finance and Facilities for the Library System.
And I am Dave Ratliff, the Director of Library and Integrated Services. I use he/him pronouns.
We have a request before you today to authorize the Chair to sign a five-year lease agreement for a 33,000-square-foot property that's located on the 4500 block of South McAdam Avenue. And this is going to help meet some of the temporary space needs that we have for the library during the bond program of work. The library team, the bond team, and DCA have all worked really closely together to scope and identify the number of spaces that we'll need as the bond program of work picks up. The current operations center is slated to close in mid-fiscal year '23 in order to accommodate the renovations at the Albina Library. And so we are working backward from that timeline to get an interim operations center up and running, knowing that we're going to need time for tenant improvements and move in. And with that, I will turn it over to Dave to talk about our plans for the space in a little bit more detail.
Great, thanks. And so we have this, sorry, a little loud there. We have our operations facility, which is not open to the public, on Northeast Russell right now. And from that building, we run all of our, basically everything that doesn't occur in a branch, happens out of that building in one way or another. It includes a lot of our outreach folks. It includes anything that has to do with purchasing, cataloging, and distributing books throughout the system. We have a sorting center there that handles essentially every item that moves from one location to another throughout the system. So it's a very busy location. Because that is closing for demolition, prior to the opening of our new operations center on 182nd, probably about a year prior to that, we needed an interim swing space to cover things. We also have a number of buildings that are undergoing major renovations, so there will be six of those in the next few years. The collections from those buildings have to go somewhere. And at any given moment, that could be up to 250,000 items potentially that we need to find storage for, which is a little more than probably fits in that space. We also don't want to just store that in boxes at a used store facility because we want to put those on shelves and have a way that even though that space isn't going to be open to the public, we will still be able to pull those items for the public and send them out as holds. So the public won't lose access to an enormous portion of the collection by doing this. We also then have refresh projects of all of the other libraries in the system. And although those are essentially paint and carpet and shelving changes, everything has to move out of those buildings as well. So again, we're going to need storage for all of those collections as we move forward, which basically means that for the better part of the next five years or so, we're going to need a significant piece of property to handle all of these changes, even after our new operations center is built out on 182nd. That operations center needs to be fully functional and all of the space there is completely spoken for. So there's no excess space there for storage of collections. So if this lease is approved, the McAdam Building that we're suggesting will not be open to the public, but we will be storing the materials there and having continued availability of those materials.
That's your presentation this morning?
Yeah.
Okay. Marina, can we go forward a couple of minutes?
Okay.
So this is just a quick look at the collection schedule that Dave was talking about, so you can kind of see how it's broken out over the next, you know, five years or so. And then, next slide. If you're interested, this is just a look at the property and you can sort of see where it's located on South McAdam. And then, next slide. Thanks. So I'll briefly just kind of cover the terms of the lease itself, which the Department of County Assets has scoped and developed with library input. We've relied on DCA's expertise, the same as we would for any lease agreement. And Scott Churchill is here in the audience if there are detailed questions about the lease. The agreement's for five years and has options to renew, but more importantly, has options to sublease if we decide that that's necessary at some point. The landlords agreed to complete the majority of the needed tenant improvements prior to move in, and those costs are included in the base rent, which starts at about $14 a square foot and has a 3% escalation each year. As a triple net lease, the library is also going to be responsible for our share of utility and operating expenses of the property. And the cost for the interim operations center lease, as well as the tenant improvements, are going to be funded from the Library District Capital Fund. And we have included in the FY '23 budget sufficient allocation for both the tenant improvements and the lease, and plan for that five-year lease in the five-year capital plan that we have for that fund. I think we've got one more slide that just, if you're interested, shows kind of a schematic layout and where the different work teams and collection spaces would be. And with that, I think we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. Marina, did we receive any public testimony on this item?
Yes, Madam Chair. Charles Johnson.
Thank you. For the record, Charles Simka Bridge Crane Johnson. And I do wish, like, in the name of transparency, there was a more clear policy that said, when you lease property right here on the board agenda, the name of the person or agency we're leasing from would be there. But it's in here. The other interesting point that I want to, first and foremost, let's make it clear, just as a point of public information, for anybody that might be thinking about going to Central Library on or after August 1st, Central Library is closed beginning August 1st until probably November 1st. So that's probably of more interest to the public than my nitpicking details about whether we're paying $14 per square foot with a 3% annual escalation. I'm not a commercial real estate expert. I trust the good people that you have working. But it is important to note that landlords, when receiving their 3% annual increase, are also doing accounting to depreciate the cost of the building. So I'm sure this was a competitive lease and it's a good rate. But just the general situation of when we rent property as a county and we see unfortunate things like having to pay 3% more per square foot every year, the people who are providing that property are almost certainly depreciating the property and getting other tax advantages. And the 3% is just because. There's no real reason for it. Their costs aren't necessarily going up. The value of their property may be increasing. But in the good old days, you would recoup that later when you sold the property, not by imaginarily saying, we need a 3% increase. And of course, I'm much more concerned how this applies to residential tenants than when you rent space to store our great books. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you.
Fake flation.
Commissioners, questions, comments? Commissioner Stegman.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much for coming. Just a question about the location, because we're looking ultimately having it in southeast. And I'm just wondering how that played a role in your decision-making, having it on McAdam? Is that a more centralized location, or is it farther away for the majority of the libraries?
It's actually a really great location for us because of a couple of things. It's accessible via public transportation. And a lot of the spaces that we were looking at were just pure warehouse space, totally unconditioned, and no public transportation access. So super difficult for our employees to get there and function in their jobs. The other thing that's great about that location is actually highway access, because this is our distribution hub. Really, it's, even though it's on the other side of the river, it's as conveniently located as our Russell Street facility, and perhaps more so in terms of access with larger vehicles and things like that without going through residential neighborhoods. I will also admit that we worked with DCA and Scott and Joy did a wonderful job for many months for us, but there were very, very few properties that met our needs anywhere in the county. And really, this ended up being by far, far and away, the best option for us, price-wise and location-wise.
That's great. Thank you, Dave. And it's air-conditioned, so that's really--
Yeah. It will be conditioned eventually. It's not yet.
Yes. Great. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Vega-Petersen?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you both so much for sharing all this information, a really thorough presentation. Yeah, this is just seems like, you know, one of those, as we're doing all this great renovation projects, you know, these are one of the, like, really important logistical pieces. Where are the books going to go while that's happening? So this is great. I know that the dollars are coming out of the library bond itself. And I do think that, you know, it seems between parking and the loading dock and all of these things that it's going to have for our needs. It seems like a great piece of property, so appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Myron?
Thank you, Katie and Dave, for bringing this forward, and also your stewardship as we are looking for that interim facility to store the library materials. And I just appreciate sort of how you're putting the pieces of the puzzle together. And actually, Commissioner Stegman asked the question I had, and Dave, you answered it perfectly. So I do not have any questions, but really appreciate all your work on this. Thank you.
And just one thing to clarify, the resources for this are coming out of the Library District Capital Fund, as opposed to the bond. It's not part of the bond program of work. It's obviously augmenting it.
Okay, thank you. I remember we did some, we had a briefing on that earlier--
Yeah. It was initially going to be part of that, and then as it got scoped, it just made more sense to do it separately.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. It's so exciting, week after week, to have more progress on our library plans. Very exciting. Marina, would you please take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Myron?
Aye.
Commissioner Vega-Petersen?
Aye.
Commissioner Stegman?
Aye.
Chair Kofori?
Aye. The resolution's adopted. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
R2, Board Briefing on Contact Tracing Audit.
It's a non-voting item auditor, so you can just begin when you're ready.
Okay, thank you. I was just waiting for my team to pop up. Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. I'm Jennifer McQuirk, the County Auditor, and I use she/her pronouns. I'm really just here to introduce my team, Caroline Zavikovsky and Dorian Pacheco, who conducted the contact tracing audit. And I am very pleased to turn things over to them.
Q, Honor McQuirk? Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Caroline Zavikovsky. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm a Principal Management Auditor in the Auditor's Office. And I'm joined today with my colleague, Dorian Pacheco. I'd like to start off by thanking the Public Health Division and DCHS, particularly BiNASTAR de la Familia and the COVID Call Center, for the time that their teams took working with us and responding to our requests for this audit, especially during such a busy and challenging time. Next slide, please. This contact tracing audit is actually the final audit in a series of pandemic response audits. The first one looked at congregate settings like jails, shelters, and adult care homes, as well as workplace safety and teleworking. The second one looked at cost recovery, and this third one, and final one, is looking at contact tracing. Our office looked at the pandemic as a whole because it's not only an area of high public interest, but it also has important implications, including health, safety, and equity implications. At the same time, when we started our audit, we knew that things were changing rapidly, and the program may not look the same or even exist in the future. And in fact, it did change a lot throughout the course of our audit. With that in mind, we looked for lessons learned to inform future county work, particularly during emergencies. Next slide. Contact tracing's been used as a bit of a catch-all term, including by our office, by calling this the contact tracing audit. But we did look at more than just contact tracing. So we looked, of course, at contact tracing, which is identifying, notifying, monitoring, and supporting people who've had a close contact exposure with someone with a confirmed diagnosis. But we also looked at case investigation, which includes identifying and investigating or interviewing people who've had a confirmed diagnosis in order to gather data, including about their contacts, and provide information and connections with support for isolation. We looked at outbreak investigation, which includes identifying sites that have had outbreaks and recommending corrections to conditions that may have led to outbreaks. And finally, we also looked at wraparound support services, which provides support and assistance to people, particularly those in vulnerable populations, to safely self-isolate or self-quarantine. At the county, it included rent and mortgage assistance, utility assistance, grocery assistance. And those were provided through contracts with culturally specific community-based organizations, as well as partnerships with BiNASTAR de la Familia and the COVID Call Center within DCHS. Next slide. We did a lot of work, and we gathered a lot of information to support our audit findings, including conducting over 70 interviews, primarily with county staff and management, as well as community health workers and external partners. We studied laws, policies, contracts, best practices, state and federal guidance, as well as program documentation. And we analyzed financial, human resources, case investigation, and support services data. I do also want to add that we ran into some data limitations. Because the state does not share all data back with the county, we did not have access to either outbreak or contact tracing data, which was a big limitation. Also, while we did have access to wraparound service data, there were some limitations with that data as well, which Dorian will talk about. Next slide, please. So our report details three key takeaways. In this presentation, I'll talk about the first one, and then I'll pass it off to Dorian to present on the next two. I don't think you'll be surprised that about the first one, I think it's pretty well-known with the high case number of cases, case investigation and contact tracing did not keep up with reaching everybody who either tested positive or was a close contact of someone who tested positive. And universal case investigation and contact tracing was discontinued. The second one is that wraparound support services, again, like grocery and rent assistance that helps people isolate, were not always easy to access. And finally, as I mentioned, we did identify lessons learned that could be applied to future emergencies. So even though the contact tracing program changed throughout our audit, the county as a whole can learn from their experiences with quickly scaling up a team and working with community partners during an emergency. Next slide. For some contacts, going back to June of 2020, which I know at this point seems like a very long time ago. At that time, the state mandated the county to do contact tracing and mandated that the county had 122 contact tracers in order to reopen. As we note in our report, the county never quite reached that number. But at the same time that there is a state mandate, we also heard from public health leadership, as well as seeing in our own research, concerns that universal contact tracing may not have been the most cost-effective strategy, especially as time went on. Contact tracing is a proven public health strategy, but is less effective for disease containment when a disease is widespread, as COVID has been. It is labor-intensive, and it is time-sensitive. Because COVID can spread before people start to show symptoms, and because there are delays in our systems, such as delays in receiving test results, that slowed down the process. Case investigation and contact tracing can serve additional purposes beyond disease containment, such as gathering data, providing education and information, and connecting people to support services. But by early 2022, state and local government health organizations, as well as the CDC, stopped recommending universal case investigation and contact tracing in favor of a more targeted approach. Next slide. For the sake of transparency about the program, our report goes into the timeline of program changes, as well as changing requirements. This slide has an image with an overview of those program changes. The full blue circles indicate work that was done during each surge. The half-circles indicate work that was started but discontinued. And finally, the empty circles, of course, represent work that was not done during each surge. There are a number of key elements of contact tracing that were discontinued throughout the pandemic. The first key element that was discontinued was active monitoring, or checking in regularly with people who are quarantining because of a close contact. The county really only did this for a few weeks. By the time it was up and running in fall of 2020, it was quickly ended due to rising cases and was never resumed. Contact tracing was also paused in fall of 2020. It was resumed briefly in spring of 2021, but ended with a Delta wave. When the county was not contact tracing, people were encouraged to notify their own contacts. And if they did not feel comfortable doing so, county staff were available to notify their contacts on their behalf. And finally, interviewing cases for case investigation continued throughout most of our audit, as well as into the first few weeks of the Omicron VA one-way. As case numbers rose higher than ever before, individual case investigation was discontinued in the county and across the state. Targeted case investigation focused on outbreaks has continued since then. Though individual case investigation was ongoing throughout most of our audit, it did not reach all people with positive cases, as I will discuss in the next slide. Next slide. From the start of the pandemic, through the time case investigation was discontinued, county case investigators interviewed about 30,000 people, which we should note is a lot of people. However, with the large cases, there were an additional approximately 40,000 people with reported positive cases who were not interviewed. The image on this slide has hundreds of small boxes, with each box representing about 100 people. The dark boxes represent people who were interviewed, and the light boxes represent people who are not interviewed. In large waves, and as the pandemic continued on, proportionally fewer people were interviewed. When people weren't called, this affected data quality. It also affected people's ability to receive information, as well as case investigators' ability to gather information from people about their contacts while contact tracing was still happening. But perhaps most importantly, it also affected connecting people with services that helped them isolate. Dorian will go into more detail about support services, but I want to point out that at times, case investigation process was the best way for people to learn about these services. And because so many people were not being reached, it created a bottleneck in access. And with that, I'll pass the presentation to Dorian to talk about support services and lessons learned.
Thank you, Caroline. And for the record, my name is Dorian Pacheco, and she/her pronouns, I'm a management auditor at the Auditor's Office. Thank you for taking the time to listen to us today. This slide shows the approximate numbers of households that received county isolation and quarantine support, which, as Caroline mentioned, includes up to one month of grocery utility and rent or mortgage assistance from June 1st, 2020, through January 3rd, 2022. As you can see on the bars here on the left, both community health workers at contracted community-based organizations, and BiNASTAR de la Familia located in DCHS assisted over 7,000 households each. The blue bar to the right shows approximately 2,500 urgent grocery orders placed by the COVID Call Center, also in DCHS. The staff at the center coordinated referrals across the county, as well as with external partners, such as community-based organizations. The COVID Call Center defines an urgent grocery order as a household needing food within the next five days. They placed these same-day delivery orders while households waited for BiNASTAR or community health workers at community-based organizations to provide additional assistance. Finally, on the rightmost side, we have the approximate number of self-referrals placed to contracted community-based organizations, which was around 2,500 as well. That means a self-referral rather, where a community member called an organization directly, rather than going through county channels. I have it highlighted here in green for you because the number of self-referrals is likely higher than reported to the counties. We learned that community-based organizations reported a number of self-referrals, who assisted inconsistently throughout the pandemic. Some reported frequently, while others did not. And I'll talk more about data limitations, such as this one, in an upcoming slide. Overall, we heard a lot of positive feedback regarding the wraparound service system, and I want to highlight that thousands of households and thousands of people positively benefited from these services and the hard work behind them. We heard that the system required more collaboration across the county than in the past. Employees that we talked to praised the interdepartmental agreement between health and DCHS, and some staff even said that they hadn't seen such a high level of coordination of the county throughout their over 10 years of public service at Multnomah County. Likewise, the county also broadened the number of partnerships it had with community-based organizations. Public health went from working with 17 organizations that had had county contracts with public health in the past, to now working with over 50 to provide culturally and statistically specific services. Next slide, please. So the wraparound service system was complex, and its complexity, as it times, contributed to barriers to service delivery. I do want to note that services evolved rapidly as part of the pandemic response. And we heard a lot of analogies to building the plane, as in flying it, from both county and DCHS. So as you can see here, the blue boxes are county services. That includes Multnomah County Public Health, the layer contact tracing, case investigation team, the county COVID Call Center--
I'm going to pause you just for, I'm having difficulty here--
I'm going to pause you just for, I'm having difficulty here understanding. I don't know if it's your microphone. I'm wondering maybe if you hold, take the, your microphone. Yeah, try that or hold the little microphone part closer to your mouth. It's just, it's a little hard.
I can move to the headphones. Can you hear me better?
A little bit, maybe a little bit slower, too. I don't, I'm just, I think it's, there's, I don't know if it's our, on our end or on your end, but it's a little bit garbled.
Oh, it does the sound sound now?
It sounds better.
Okay. I'll make an effort to speak slower.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. So I'll start from the top. The blue boxes are county services, which include the contact tracing and case investigation teams in Public Health, the county COVID Call Center in DCHS, the Ina Star de la Familia, also in DCHS, and community health workers, such as those in integrated clinical services. The green are external partners, such as community health workers at contracted community-based organizations and 211. And finally, in the brick red or terracotta color, these are the county-provided support services. That includes short-term grocery assistance provided by the COVID Call Center, as well as the isolation and quarantine support provided by both the county and external partners. And that includes, again, up to one month of grocery, rent, mortgage, and utility assistance. Next slide, please. So as I illustrated in the previous slide, the wraparound service system is quite complex. And someone who is sick or symptomatic needs to go through many internal and external partners to receive services. The system is also very phone call-dependent. People need calls transferred, to be called back, and also to make several phone calls to receive services, all while sick. We heard that people experienced caller fatigue, and they were also confused and overwhelmed talking to so many different people. We found that avenues for self-referrals were not well-publicized throughout the majority of the pandemic. As mentioned earlier in this presentation, a large number of people did not receive phone calls from Public Health. Letters, text messages, and other forms of messaging from Public Health instructed people to call 211, where they were given the number of the COVID Call Center. At the same time, others were able to receive services by calling community health workers, the COVID Call Center, or the Ina SPAT directly because they got these phone numbers from family members or friends that had previously interacted with the county and its partners. The lack of clarity around who to call, as well as the unnecessary complexity of calling several numbers, negatively impacted sick and symptomatic people during an already stressful and difficult time. Additionally, this likely impacted people who speak languages other than English the most. We found that although there are staff who speak multiple languages at the county and at partner organizations, pairing people up was at times challenging, and third-party interpretation service providers were still used quite heavily. Coordinators had to place several calls to get translators and clients on the same phone call, which may have further delayed service delivery for, again, people who speak languages other than English. Next slide, please. There were also several data issues we encountered throughout the course of this audit. The wraparound services, we found that the county collected limited metrics from contracted community-based organizations. This was done to provide them flexibility in the pandemic response. However, we could not ultimately evaluate the effectiveness and the efficiency of service delivery because of limited data. All of the data of information is collected, like what has gone well and what could be improved, but there's limited information on who is served and when. Staff at community-based organizations told us that the county did not tell them what to collect, and many set up their own data collection systems. So if we look back on this program in the future, there could be data aggregation or data reliability issues. In addition, the county does not share referral information back with community-based organizations. We heard from both staff at the county and external partners that a shared system would greatly benefit their work, and in the absence of one, they have spent hundreds of hours of additional work time. We heard from county management that a system was considered but rejected because they were concerned with the time it would have taken to set up a system that may not be needed in the future. There was a lot of uncertainty around the pandemic and how long it would last or has lasted to this day. However, in the absence of an efficient shared system, they have created, or they created, the rest of the issues listed here on this slide, which is, number one, no monitoring of duplication of services. Because there is no shared system, people can place requests to multiple organizations in the same time period. And that creates an issue where the county and partners cannot serve a greater number of people or provide more appropriate long-term assistance to the caller. There is also no tracking or limited tracking of receipt of services. Oftentimes, the county partners do not confirm when payments are made. So people follow up and say that they have not received a service that is important, like a grocery delivery. And lastly, there is no tracking of timeliness of services. We cannot look up the average time of service delivery, which is especially relevant during busy times like surges, when services are heavily impacted. Grocery and utility assistance appear to happen quickly, but rent and mortgage assistance can be slow, especially during high terms of need, like surges. At the county, it involves a lot of paperwork, and the financial processes the county can also add time. Next slide, please. So I'll walk you through some of the lessons learned that we identified. Our report highlights these, and the pandemic is unprecedented and has challenged us all in a multitude of unexpected ways. The challenges and experiences that staff and partners face during this time can be instructive for future county operations and emergencies. First, the county could make improvements to onboarding processes, as well as providing programs with support. A large number of people were hired and onboarded in the summer of 2020 to fulfill the contact tracing requirement to reopen Multnomah County. We heard that HR recruiters were working hard, but had a much higher workload than other areas of the county. We also heard from the communal disease staff that many of them felt that the training they received was an issue. For many, they reported that the training they received created issues with efficiency and workflows later on. This also impacted how quickly and efficiently people were able to receive services, as well as the quality of information that cases and contacts received during a sensitive time. Overall, we found that the workload that the health department staff had was disproportionately high. During a pandemic and emergency affecting all of us, we should come together to respond and avoid leaving some people, some communities, and some departments or other areas of the county with disproportionately high burdens. The second lesson learned is around data and oversight. As I mentioned, we found that during the pandemic, the county had to balance between giving organizations the flexibility to address emergencies, but also being able to evaluate programs. County expertise in program evaluation already exists, but was not allocated to these areas. In the future, increased collaboration with county staff who already do this work can help us look back and see what really worked, what could have been, and what could have been improved with greater detail. And finally, there are opportunities to build on existing work with community partners. This is one of the most positive findings to come out of this audit. We heard lots of positive feedback, and the county formed so many new relationships. We believe that community partnerships and capacity building, the small team in Public Health, which supported and formed many of these partnerships, is doing great work and that their work should be uplifted. Community-based work should not be transactional, and we should not let these new relationships tail off only to have to reach out during the next emergency. So keeping and strengthening these relationships is important for additional county operations, including equitable and culturally specific service delivery. Next slide, please. And finally, I'll walk you through our recommendations. This slide here shows our recommendations to the Health Department to work with the Department of County Human Services to provide better oversight and support to contracted organizations, plan and evaluation of wraparound services, document the lessons learned that we've highlighted in our report, and, again, continue building relationships with internal and external partners to uplift the great work that has been done throughout the course of the pandemic. Next slide, please. Our last two recommendations are meant to address challenges with rapidly staffing programs and scaling up during the emergency. And so these are geared towards the COO to work with department leadership, human resources, risk management, and emergency management, to identify barriers and establish processes for redeploying county experts during emergencies, as well as to evaluate and revise or add to general county trainings for working during emergencies. Next slide, please. That is the end of our presentation. Thank you all so much for listening to us. And please let us know if you have any questions. And as a side note, I am so sorry that my sound was a little bit garbled earlier in the presentation.
Thank you. And we'll have questions from commissioners for our auditor team. And also, I'd like the Health Department folks to come up in case they have, in case commissioners have questions for them as well. So Ebony, Dr. Loeffler, Lisa Ferguson, Tamika, if you could, and then Serena Cruz. Why don't you be on deck just in case, because I know there's, touched on a lot of different county operations. So I want all of you to be available. Thank you. All right, commissioners, questions, comments for the auditors team or our Health Department staff? Commissioner Myron?
Thank you. Thank you so much, Auditor McWark and the presenters here today, and the teams who engaged in this really deep analysis and audit. And I just appreciate so much of that work, also our public health team, our Health Department, and all of your work. And this is, there is so much here. And I, you know, hope to have ongoing conversation about this because this is, you know, this is the beginning, not the end of this work. And I, well, I, I think that, you know, I just want to say upfront, the pandemic, as we all express all the time and as we have said throughout, was unprecedented. And so it required an unprecedented response. We have never been here before, like we have never taken on this kind of work. And the people who are on our teams and rows to the occasion and engaged are exceptional and went above and beyond the call of duty. And so that is just the context in which I want to express some of these comments here. Because what I think they point to are our systems, some of our systems and how they have, they, they did not rise to meet the need that we had. And, you know, in terms of some very essential, important areas and in terms of, you know, mentioning the accessibility of wraparound services and lack of clarity, the unnecessary complexity. That is something I heard regularly from constituents, from people that I heard working at other community-based organization partners and patients I would see in the ER. They, you know, it, it's, that was out there. I experienced that. It was, you know, not sure what to say about it, except we can do better. And I appreciate the auditors calling this out and their recommendations. The data issues, that is, that one is really significant. Because it is concerning to me for a whole array of reasons because it doesn't allow us to evaluate our effectiveness. It doesn't let us know what works, what doesn't, whether organizations delivering the services are deliver, whether we, as responsible for delivering those services, are actually meeting those requirements. We can't measure progress. When we, you know, do something now, we won't be able to compare it and say, oh, we did this better now that we have done a different process. So that is huge. And I also think it's something that extends far beyond the public health issue at the county. So I think that's something that struck me, and I would love to engage in further conversation about that because it is a big deal with all that we do. And, you know, I'm curious in terms of the audit vis-à-vis a, like a public health after-action report. And I do have the definition of an after-action report, which we've seen in different contexts. Bert, for public health especially is, you know, a detailed critical summary or analysis of a past event created to reassess decisions and consider possible alternatives for future scenarios. Is there a plan for the Public Health Department itself to do this kind of an after-action report to create a full, in-depth plan further to COVID?
Yeah. And then back to Serena, our COO, do you want to step up and talk about our after-action reports?
Thanks, Chirica Forey, commissioners. Yes, we have a plan to complete an entire emergency after-action report. So that would involve all the different parties that came to the table to move the county's response forward and the opportunities we have to, to learn lessons from that experience. So I do want Ebony to get a chance, or our department director, to get a chance to talk about the Health Department's approach here. And they're going to be ahead of the rest of the county. And we're going to be able to build on their work as we do the broader after-action report.
Director Clark?
Good morning. My name is Ebony Clark. I am the Multnomah County Health Department Director. Pronouns are she, her, hers. You know, what I also, I just want to highlight and bring forward that we are still in a pandemic. We have not officially entered our recovery phase. And so we are continuing to uplift, lead, and respond to COVID-19. That said, we currently have a Health Department-specific response and recovery structure in place. And we're leveraging that platform and table to begin to just make note of lessons learned in addition to looking at the areas that were identified in the audit to just start to do kind of some foundational preliminary work so that then when we embark on the larger or broader county effort around an after-action review, we can be strategic and coordinated and have that synergy. So more to come there. I just want to highlight that we are continuing to respond in addition to the heat wave, in addition to HMPXV. I also want to just take this moment to briefly highlight that Jessica Guernsey, our Public Health Director, is not with us as she is out. I also want to highlight that Dr. Vines, who is our County Health Officer, is out. And so we are going to do the best of our ability to answer questions and/or be sure to follow up.
That's great. And I really, I appreciate that. And, yeah, like I said, this is the beginning, not the end of this conversation. I think it highlights some really, really key issues. And just for, for quote, you know, after-action reports, part of that, you know, within the toolkit for actually implementing those are opportunities to, you know, those are ongoing. And that work should be happening even as the action itself is kind of happening. And so that emergent, like, or urgent lessons learned can be implemented in real time. And for example, I just heard from, you know, I just spoke with the director of a local community-based organization who said they, they have received virtually no information about the, I'm going to call it, quote, when air quotes, monkeypox. The, they have no information and they, they have almost given up. They're, they're doing their own thing because some of their experience with COVID and now with the monkeypox is that they're not getting the experience with COVID and now with the monkeypox is that they're not getting the information they need from the county, they're going to other sources. And so how are we using lessons learned from COVID to apply to this whole new thing coming out, I think is important.
And can I just interrupt real quick? I appreciate that comment and I think it would be helpful for our team if you would relay that to them as well so that they can follow up with said organization.
Yep.
That would be great.
Absolutely. And I am, to which team are your team, Public Health, Director Clark, okay, all of those. And it was just yesterday, so I will follow up on that. And, and so I guess, yep, I look forward to the development of our plans and how we're going to address some of these issues moving forward. And I do, I appreciate the Auditor's Office also acknowledging the challenge of having all of this connected to the state, which was not forthcoming in, you know, how they released data, how they engaged in all of this work. And so that limited so many of our efforts, I think, where we, you know, were ready to just go ahead and then there was the state. So thank you, thanks all of you so much for this work.
And I just want to add, I know that I wasn't called on Ebony Clark, Health Department Director. Again, I just want to take a moment to, to recognize again, as it was said, that, you know, this was unprecedented times. And I want to uplift and acknowledge our Health Officer, the Public Health Director, and the full Public Health Team, just because, you know, while there's always areas for improvement and the importance of us being held accountable to assure continuous process improvement, we as a Health Department and Public Health Division were leaders throughout the state and oftentimes folks followed the strategies that we implored. And so while this is a key process to hold us accountable and to recognize how do we get it right as we continue to move forward, I want to take a minute to just thank Public Health Division and Health Department and all of our partners across the county.
Yeah. That's why I framed, that's why I framed from the beginning to say exactly that. You said it beautifully. Thank you.
Commissioner Vega Peterson?
Thank you, Chair. So first of all, thank you Auditor McWark and Carolyn and Dorian for this audit. I do think it's, I mean, it's such an interesting thing for us to audit because it was something that the county had not done at this scale ever before. And the fact that, you know, as the largest county in the state, we did hire, have to hire hundreds of workers to perform this work and really put systems in place in a way that hasn't. I mean, it's both something that was an incredible response from our Public Health Team and also something that, you know, as we're, as we're going through this work, we want to make sure what we, what we've done and how, and what we can learn from all of this as well. And I think, and I appreciate that the audit reflected the changing nature of the pandemic, right? And what works at the beginning where you are trying to really focus on how do we contain the virus spread and really be able to manage and measure, you know, who has it, who are they in contact with, all that, the nature of that changes, you know, in the course of a pandemic when it really becomes such a widespread societal issue and that there are new tools and different ways of really trying to track that information. But that being said, I really appreciated in the audit, the focus on the way that we can better serve our public and some of the things that were, you know, sticking points or were areas to improve that came up in this audit, but we also know our factors and other ways that we're serving the public and delivering services. You know, it's always a challenge with interpretation services and really making sure that we are creating as seamless a process as possible for folks who need that kind of interpretation services, especially when it relates to healthcare or critical services like this. And I just really, and I think that can, you know, really goes into how we are, how we are serving the public in general. And just the, you know, and just really reflecting that the contact tracing that happened wasn't just about, you know, I really am proud of the way that the county didn't just do, we're doing contact tracing, we're finding out this information with just an eye to like really getting information about this disease, but we did it as a way of doing outreach and really connecting people and being there and serving our public. And I think that was something that was an important value for Multnomah County, the way that we are going to be doing this kind of work as well as other work of really like, how can we, in the connections we have with the public, how can we be serving them the best? And it's important to have that included in the audits that we do because we want to, we want to be able to do that work going forward and we want to do it in the best way possible. So I think, so I was just really happy with all of this. I do, I don't really have any questions. You know, I am really glad to hear that there is going to be a larger, kind of, we used to call them in the tech industry, postmortems on, on the, on the work that was done with COVID response, you know, writ large and, you know, this will be a key part of it and I think that will be helpful and I hope that the Auditor's Office will be able to contribute that work with the information that you've been able to glean through this and the other audits that you've done around those issues. So just appreciate this work and appreciate the focus on this today. Thank you.
Commissioner Stegman?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much, Auditor McWark and Carolyn and Dorian for this audit. And thank you to our Health Department and our local public health team. As has been said, this is our first pandemic that I'm aware of. And so it's kind of hard to compare, give a score or grade to something, I don't know, I think about like, well, the first time we went to the moon, you know, like was that, you know, was that an A, was it a C? I think the fact that, for the most part, we have survived, although not everyone did. But, you know, so I do have a couple of questions. On Slide eight, it talks about that 30,000 case investigators interviewed, interviewed 30,000 people, but 40,000 were not interviewed. I mean, I'm not really sure, does, can anybody answer, like, I'm not sure that it was ever our goal to, to interview 100% of the folks. Was that a goal?
I can speak to that. Hi, Lisa Ferguson, I use she/her pronouns, Communicable Disease Manager. Thank you, Chair Cifori and Commissioners. So when we do communicable disease investigations, you know, I think with something like COVID, it's a much higher volume than we would normally be interviewing. We strive to usually interview most people so that we can ensure we're connecting dots where exposures might have occurred or people might have been exposed. In COVID, you know, we knew we wouldn't reach everybody as the pandemic went on. In addition to the high volume of cases, we also had community members who weren't interested in speaking with us and so sometimes people wouldn't answer our calls or return them. And so we strategized ways that we could still make sure people had the information they needed about how to isolate, how they could safely obtain services, you know, if they had questions about additional medical care they might need. So we initiated some things like sending out texts to any of our cases and sending letters to all of our cases with additional information so that they had a way to both reach us if they had more questions and read the information on their own if they didn't talk to us. So we did not expect to talk to everybody, but we did have ways to get information out to everybody so that they could access resources as needed.
Thank you, Dr. Ferguson. I did talk to one of our contact tracers and that was an experience that there were some people, a population, that did not want to speak to us too. So I think that there are other elements than just the data that's being presented here, although the data is important as well. The other question I had about Carolyn, I think you talked about the shared referral system and something about the data wasn't going back to the organizations or the nonprofits. So I was a little bit confused about, I mean, yes, it'd be great, but I don't know of any system that we have where, you know, or maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, where somebody gets referred to us and then do we report back to that referring agency? I'll just...
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, no, go ahead, sorry.
I was just going to say that, again, Caroline Savikovsky for the record, one of the concerns that we had heard around that is not having a process, whether it's any, having a shared system where you can actually check somebody's record or having a different sort of process where you can check for duplication of services. So the CBOs did not have any way to know whether someone that was requesting services from them had been requesting services from any other CBO or part of the county previous to that.
Ebony, did you have something to add?
No.
Okay. Well, that's probably a greater question. I think, you know, what brings to mind is the Data Trust Project and really it's, I think, around IT, which is outside of this conversation, but I do think that that's something that the county needs to look at. And on another note, I also heard individual stories where people, you know, maybe a loved one was lost, spouses were lost, where these contact tracers like, were like, you know, they were going, you know, making sure they had food and, I mean, so, you know, data's data and yes, we can always do better, but I think we need to look at the qualitative as well as the quantitative data. And I think it's important for us to look at both, so I appreciate the Auditor's Report, but I also appreciate the humanity that you all and your teams delivered to our community. So thank you.
I don't have any questions either. I just wanted to thank the Health Department staff. As we've said several times, we're, we're still in this pandemic and I do think it's important to talk about the context of the past two years, which also included the deadliest heat wave that we've ever experienced, the worst winters that we've experienced. And these same staff, with the exception of contact tracers, are, we're working on all of these different areas. So it's not like there's been a lot of downtime. And I think the fact that we have some of our key leadership out on leave for various reasons shows you that people are still struggling with the immense, immense pressure and stress that they've gone through over the past two years. So I cannot thank you all enough for the work that you've done and your teams and that you continue to do. Ebony, you said it, but I'm going to highlight it. Not only were we leading our county through something that none of us had ever been through, but we had to lead the state. We had to push the state on time and time and time again, took precious time from work that we were doing here to make sure that they were doing the right thing. And so I just, you know, my heart goes out to you all. Thank you very much and appreciate this conversation this morning. I know we will continue to have more about this topic as we, we all know people are still getting it today, so this, we're not done yet. And with that, we have come to the end of our, thank you Auditor McWark and staff for your work. We have come to the time on our agenda for non-agenda items. Commissioner Vega Peterson, did you have something?
Thank you, Chair. So I just wanted to appreciate all the work that's being done right now for all the folks who are staffing the cooling centers. You know, we're having high heat all through the weekend and a lot of people who are, need help and need a place to go. So I just appreciate that work and want to encourage anyone who thinks that they need it, feels like they might need it, to please, please, please take advantage of it. It's there for you. The other thing I wanted to mention is on Sunday, there is going to be almost a day-long celebration of the Earl Blumenauer Bridge grand opening. This is the new bike and pedestrian bridge that is going over I-84 connecting the Lloyd Center and the Central East Side area. There will be activities happening all day long. I will be there for a part of it and just encourage people to come out, get on their bikes or take a walk over and join a lot of the festivities. Every, everyone from, I think Milagro is having a plaza, there's going to be activities right around the bridge and it's going all the way up into the Lloyd Center, so lots to do there.
Hopefully it'll be a wee bit cooler. Commissioner Stegman?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to remind folks, unfortunately, every single year, we, there are drownings in the Sandy River. And I know it's hot, I know out at Glen Auto Park, many of the places you can get a life jacket. And I know it's so hot and we think the water's going to be refreshing, but it's ice cold and it can paralyze you and can restrict your breathing and along with a multitude of other things that can happen. So please, 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 wear a life jacket if you go into our rivers, if you want to cool off someplace safer. There are splash pads and the ones in East County, there's one at Wood Village City Hall, one in downtown Gresham, and then there's also one in downtown Rockwood.
Thank you. Commissioner Myron?
Thank you. Yep. So on this Saturday, the July 30th at noon, I'll be speaking at a rally for Medicare for All hosted by Jobs with Justice at Shemansky Park. And everyone deserves access to quality healthcare, no matter who they are, where they come from, what their background is, what their income level is, et cetera. So I invite community members who feel the same way or want to learn more to come join the rally and also, on a related note, the State Universal Healthcare Task Force, where I sit, is having a meeting today and that will be by Zoom, virtually 1:00 to 5:00 PM and you can access via the Oregon Health Authority website. And as both my colleagues have mentioned, it's another hot week in Portland, which we've all been feeling. And on Monday, as we were getting to, I think it was 97 degrees, a mere 97 degrees when we went out, volunteered with Portland Street Medicine and it just showed the growing humanitarian crisis on our streets. And for the many county employees volunteering in our cooling shelters, including Tabitha from my team, she's actually at the cooling shelter, I think, so she's not watching, but, and my husband, thank you so much for taking the time to provide care to others. And also the many county employees who organized the setting up of these cooling shelters and for our communications team who has been working incredibly hard to inform the public and get that information out there, get services out there. Your work is nothing short of lifesaving. So encourage more people to donate water supplies to organizations that provide care to people, including, you know, for example, Blanchehouse and others, and for people just to educate themselves about the heat so that they can minimize and prevent risk from exposure and heat exhaustion and heat stroke. So stay hydrated, stay cool, stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to be circulating a letter to our board as the Board of Health to send to the FDA to offer our comments on the rules, rulemaking that they're doing with restricting flavored tobacco products, including menthol. Our goal has always been to protect children from flavored e-cigarettes and smokeless tobacco. So hopefully your staff can take a look at that today and get back to us. Liz Smith Curry from my team will be circulating that to your staff so we can make our position known. Thank you. And that is all for today. So thank you so much for your time. We will see you next week.